Exceptionally. I'm not recording, anyway. When that happens, the gas can natural gas companies in southern England and Boston, etc. Are mandated under law to provide their gas for home heating first, not for power generation. So power stations get curtailed and if we end up with a week long, you know, sub zero event. And the natural gas gets scarce, ISO starts scrambling on, okay, how are we going to cover this demand? They like to have an extra 5,000 megawatts at all times. And there are times when we're under a thousand. So they develop, they developed this committee, I'm on it. And so it's good for Hardwick, you know, we're going to have a lot of really good insight and I'm going to be let's have access to good information for purchase power stuff for us and it's a really good thing. So I just share that. Stuff we're working on, the sewer line easement for our warehouse, our sewer system failed over there and I decided to tie us into the municipal system. And we paid those fees and we had it engineered and the neighboring property owner said, yeah, no problem with an easement. And then when it came time to sign the easement, his wife said, no way. But we've worked that all out, took a couple of months to get there. So that's all done and signed and we'll be doing that as a spring project. Guys have been working, obviously work is customer work is slow because it's winter, that's pretty normal. We shift this time of year to maintenance and upgrade projects. And we're doing a big one right now on the transmission line between our substations, which includes adding the express circuit I've been talking about for probably a year or two. That's going to give us full system redundancy, so outages will be very short if and when you have them. System wide outages, I mean, and we're also as part of that project, building a underbuilt, a lower voltage circuit to serve a new hemp facility. That's projected to be our biggest customer in the system, so that'll be a welcome addition. We just completed a few weeks ago, a LiDAR project for to for our needs, but also to assist the CUDs with their fiber build out. So LiDAR is a light detection and ranging system, which uses satellite signals to actually locate poles and wires right to the wire that you do it. And they, they, the contract I signed with them is they had to locate no less than 75% of our poles, which they did. The other ones are under tree cover or, you know, had had to be located by other means, which we're working out right now. But that project went great and the CUDs are using that data to continue into their build out projects that they need to work. So that was a good thing to get back. One thing I wanted to share is we, I've had some trucks on order now, some pickup trucks for over 36 weeks and we're still waiting for them. I don't know if the town is running into the same problems. But because of that, I checked on hotline trucks too. And normally we can order a truck and get it built, spec'd and built within about 12 months. And the manufacturers are telling me, well, it's over 12 months just to get the chassis. And then it's running about another 14 months to build the trucks. So over, well over two years to get a truck at this point. I don't know if you guys are seeing the same thing, but that really, if you're, if you're unaware, you should start planning ahead. Okay, I have the VEPSA summary of variance reports and they show that we for the, for 2021, we had a 96% coverage rate. And we were 2% under budget for the year, so that's really good. Our revenues year to date were 6% over budget and year to date expenses were 1.73 under. So those were both good news as well. And we are starting our 2021 audit next week, which is way early, which I love. Because usually we're scrambling at the end, but our auditor, Anne Peish, lost two of their staff people. One to a retirement, one to a health issue. So they're, they're excited about getting in early with us and getting us done. So that's, that's a welcome expressed or quicker run schedule. Was somebody wanting to ask me something there?
I was just wondering if, when you said year to date, that's this 2022, just January?
That's up to 2021, December 31, 2021.
Okay, so that was a, those were full year figures?
Yeah, we're always behind, I don't have January yet because we're always behind because the ISO settlements don't come for six weeks. Okay. What else? So we got some other upcoming projects this year. The sluice gate that was put off is going to be a hot topic at the hydro this year. We did complete the search tower foundation, that was a huge project. And I wanted to share some pictures with you tonight, but I didn't want to screw up this Zoom thing. So I'll try and just shoot you all an email of the before and after, the before, during and after photos, so you can check that out. What else? Well, any, is there any questions about anything?
I have a couple, I was wondering, is the H11 project online?
H11 has been online since November 10th, right around there.
Great.
And it actually is, has been generating pretty good considering it's winter. The, if you go down there today, there, there's no snow on the earth, it's pretty awesome.
Great, awesome. Do you have a date for when your website's going to be back up to date?
Yeah, we have a, we have a new agreement with a new provider. And we had a kickoff meeting last at least two or three weeks ago. And he is contracted to have a new site for us up and running by the end of February.
Oh, that's crazy. Great. Yeah, that's it for me. Any other questions for Mike?
I have one. Do you have an idea when there you're going to want to tie into the sewer?
Oh, not till spring.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got a temporarily permanent porta potty available for right now, so we're good.
Just, just give me a, a week or so notice so we can find that out.
Yeah, I would say, you know, mid-April, something like that.
Okay.
All right, thanks a lot, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving on to, looks like we're onto item number one, select word to decide on an in-person versus Australian ballot town meeting. And so we're allowed again this year to do Australian ballot, which is what we did last year. We talked about it in our last meeting. COVID still seems to be raging all around us and I guess our discussion last meeting was mostly centered around, it might not be a great idea to bring hundreds of people together in the school.
Well, we didn't know last meeting, one was the state going to provide any funds to offset the cost of sending ballots to everybody and all of that, do we know that now?
I don't believe they are, we haven't heard anything in our office about them doing that this year.
And last year that came from, I think that was led by the Secretary of State's office.
Yes. So if you were to choose to mail, that would be on the town, cost wise this year.
What did it cost?
Casey and I figured it would be, depending on the side, the weight of it, from between 4,4500 to mail to all active registered voters, because you have the stamp, the outside and the return hole.
That doesn't sound like a huge amount of money in the interest of public health.
Last year we had pretty good participation through the process, right?
Last year we received 560 absentee back of what was mailed out, which was around 2,300. But of that 560, Albert and I estimated probably 60% returned them to us at the firehouse the day of election, not by mail.
Do we have to, if we mail them out, do we have to provide postage on the return?
Yes.
We do, okay. Other thoughts on doing a in-person versus, an in-person town meeting versus going to an Australian ballot? So Tanya, so Michael, go ahead.
I'm okay with it.
With which, which way you want to go?
With not going to a in-person town meeting.
Doing the Australian ballot?
Yes.
And Tanya, you guys would set up in the firehouse again, is that what your plan would be?
We already talked to Tommy and if it's available, Casey got in contact with whoever does the COVID testing and they are out early afternoon on Mondays. We have plenty of time to set up and then they're not there on Tuesdays.
And all right, does anybody, is anybody in the select board leaning toward doing an in-person town meeting?
No.
Do you want like a motion to do a Australian ballot town meeting? Would that be helpful?
That would be very helpful. Do you want to, do you want to also make that motion to mail out, do you want to mail out ballots, absentee ballots to everybody? Because we don't have to, that's a separate question, or are we going to do that separately?
Is, I have a question, is there a requirement that those ballots have to be mailed out or?
They do not have to.
Can you stop in if you're, if you want a ballot?
Yep, or you can call, email and request one and we can mail you one too.
Okay, so rather than providing 2,300, 20?
We're at, because we don't have to mail them to challenge voters, so that would be as of today, 2,033 people that we mailed.
So we mailed out to that roughly 2,033 people, we got 500 back via in the mail? Or total? They came to the firehouse, okay, so maybe mailing them, I mean, I'm just looking at logistics and, you know, if people don't feel comfortable, they can reach out, we can put that on front porch forum. But they can reach out to the town clerk's office and then provide them with one at their request.
And if you come in early, once the ballots are available, you can come in and use the memorial across the way.
Yeah. Do an absentee ballots.
Tony, which is easier for you?
I'm sorry to hear this.
Which is easier for you, to just mail them out en masse or deal with?
Deal with the phone calls and not mail them.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that's a good idea as well.
Sarah, you're on mute.
Sorry, yeah, I had barking dogs happening. Ernie's got an opinion about this apparently. So I'll make the motion that we we do not have an in-person town meeting, as sad as that is for me to do. And in light of public safety and that we do a mass information program to let people know that they need to request their ballot. Via absentee.
So your motion is to do an Australian ballot town meeting instead of in-person?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second?
Okay, any more discussion on that? So that it's just to do the Australian ballot for the town meeting. And so no in-person meeting, but we'll try to, and, and we won't mail out to everybody on the, on the list, but people can still call the town clerk or stop by and get an absentee ballot if they desire. Otherwise voting will be on town meeting day at the firehouse.
We'd also like to request permission from you guys again this year to set up for the ballots and the tabulator. We did last year, so we don't have to be in town.
Yeah. And that, that had a price tag too of something.
Last year, last year it was 3,600, the paddings included printing 48, well, 24, 2,430 ballots, which we wouldn't have to print that many because we wouldn't be mailing them to everybody.
Yeah.
With the last year, the most was 3,600, I don't know this year's. Well, it would be, that's what last year was, 3,600.
Okay, so let's deal with that after we vote on the, the current thing. So any more discussion about doing Australian ballot instead of an in-person meeting? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. So that's all four of us, so the motion carries. All right, so second motion sounds like, do you want to? Yeah, we probably can just have a motion to have, have the town clerk's office do the, what do you call them, the?
Tabulator.
Tabulator ballots.
Well, I'll move that, that the town clerk's office do tabulator ballots. And that people be informed that they can request a ballot absentee, they can come into the town clerk's office and pick it up, or they can vote in person at the, the firehouse on town meeting day. Second?
Any more, just any discussion about that? That was a long motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, so that's everybody, so motion carries. Thank you. That's good, so we have a plan for town meeting and with, I really hope that next year we can have an in-person town meeting, which is what I was hoping for last year, but here we are.
I know, right?
Yeah, all right. Item number two on the agenda, we had Judith Ruskin and associate to discuss requests for an article on the town meeting warning about a right to know policy on wireless communication technologies. So.
Yeah, are you here for Judith? Okay, I'm going to move the camera so you can speak to the board. It's right here. Yeah, you can sit.
Hello?
Is there, is it just you? Okay, you're, you're on. Yep.
Yeah, so to go ahead, if you would like to explain or just state your name and then explain what you're, what you're here for.
My name is Brenda Bullier and I'm here for the right to know and respect to 5G.
Slide over a little bit, so I mean, you're here, so you can. Slide over, it's down the street, down the street. I'm going to tilt this over.
Yeah.
You're in the middle, right here. The board is here.
Yeah.
Some of the members and then some of the public, so.
Thank you.
This is the microphone. I appreciate you working with us on the meeting, okay?
Okay, sorry, did you want something else? Did you need to know something else?
Well, sure, I mean, if you'd like to state anything about why you'd like this added to the warning, we'll listen to it.
Well, I'm of the opinion that as far as what is going to be put in areas of the town or that possibility thereof, that everyone has the right to know when and where this is going to happen since it may affect them adversely or otherwise. So that's.
Okay. So, and, and so the idea is that, okay, so, so we've had this come before the board in the past. And one of the things that we noted was that this information is available from the Public Utility Commission, who's the one who regulates this stuff and they have a website where they know all the projects that are pending. That's where you would comment on anything anyway. So what is, so the idea with this is what?
Right to know as far as this town is concerned. And the select board being aware of this possibly happening of any cell towers or whatever being placed in the town.
So, okay.
How do you envision this happening? Just in, in your mind, what would this look like?
Um, that's a little difficult, although down the line is, there's a possibility that it may be very near to houses and can be actually directed at the house.
So can you just, no, you're fine, you're fine. So can you, you're referencing to it and?
It mean?
Can you define what?
I could probably explain a little better.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just introduce myself, my name is John Brayman, I'm not a resident of Hardwick. I was asked to, to come here by some of your constituents. By way of background, I used to work at DHC Natural Resources for 25 years, but that's not really relevant tonight. But I currently sit on the Calis Select Board, I've been a 16-year member of the Calis Select Board. And the reason I was asked to come tonight was kind of ask, answer some of the questions that you're posing now. Because they're very similar to what was raised at our very last select board meeting when this issue was raised there. And in fact, I, I forwarded, I brought it to the meeting as one of the select board members. Yes, it's true that the, well, let me first back up, the IT is radio frequency producing transmission apparatus, whether it's cell towers, the 5K, the 5G thing is what is the real concern now with this technology. And I don't know how much time you have and I won't get into much detail unless you want me to. But the way the 5G technology works is it's a very high powered, different than cell towers at distance, which I use too. I'm not anti-cellular, I use it all the time for work and, and pleasure. But this 5G is really concerning to a lot. In fact, right now it's been put on hold because of the, the, the power of this signal is so great and the bandwidth that it occupies on the radio frequency spectrum is such that it interferes with the altimeters on jet aircraft. And when they're doing an instrument only landing or takeoff or at an airport, they're concerned it's going to interfere with that and there could be some repercussions. So it's been put on hold for that reason, that, but that's not the concern for you all. The concern is that it's, it's highly directional and it, it doesn't trap, it doesn't deal well with obstacles, trees, fences and whatnot, and it's these transmission apparatus, these antenna are going to be set in downtown locations first, not near rural locations, it would be places like Hardwick, Montpelier. There are already, we know they're already being installed in, in Burlington for the last year and a half. They're just not turned on yet because it hasn't been fully deployed.
So are these residential installations?
No, they, they, the way it works, 5G technology is anticipated to work. If you have a 5G compatible phone, I don't know if mine is or not, I think it's not. But if you had a 5G phone and you're walking down Main Street and it was already deployed, every other pole is what the plan is, they have these transmission, these transmitters. And in many cases, and this is what we found in Burlington, they look the same as you would, you, you think they're transformers. So they don't, you don't realize it, they're set a little bit lower. And they may not be fully operational until you get on your phone and you start videoing or using something that uses 5G proximate to these transmitters and your phone turns on that transmitter. And they call it beam technology, this is the industry language, not me, they're called beam technology and it beams to the, the device that is signaling to it and it's a high intensity beam. So well, if, if it's just a user, I think most people wouldn't care too much, but because anybody in between that user or proximity to that user is also going to be hit with that beam. As you walk away from that pole and in closer proximity to the next transmitter, that one turns off, the next one turns on. So, but just by way, I came here tonight because this, to show the town, yes?
I apologize for interrupting, but Eric is hungry. The technology of this is complicated and I half understand it. And I'm sure that there's lots I can find out, but we're not really talking about the technology. I'm asking about a process, that, that you're asking for a right to know. What does the language, do you have the language? You have it to put on the ballot and what does the process look like? What are you really expecting us to do?
Okay, so let me first explain very briefly the process that was made reference to. I think it's Eric, I can't see with my old eyes. I apologize, the process at the PUC is, this, this is deployed on an expedited timeframe. And there's minimal notification and the notification when an application for a 5G antenna is filed and there are probably hundreds now pending across the state, all right? And they're, they're being issued, there's, there's little to no public process. The process has been afforded in order to rapidly deploy this stuff. There's a lot of pressure at the, from the FCC to do this, is in Vermont, the notice goes to the town and to the property owner who, who owns the property where the pole is located. So that property owner might own, have a pole down, down one invite the road and his or her home might be very far away up the hill, right? But the neighbor who's right across the road or right next door to the pole gets no notice. And we already saw this in the north end of Burlington. So.
Notice in the town. So. Notice comes to the town, who in the town? Who is it addressed to?
So I, I would assume the PUC sends it to the town government and in your case, if you have a, a town clerk, I'm guessing you do, it would go to the clerk. The town manager.
Work and not the manager.
And yeah, and, and so your, your town office gets sent to, we'll say the office of the town of Hardwick.
Okay, so it goes to the, to the town of Hardwick office?
Yep.
It's not that it gets blanketed to everybody in the town?
No, it's not, so that's what this initiative is about. The idea is to, when the town gets that notice, they might come up with something simple. This is what we're going to do in Calis, we're, we're going to put it on our website. And so the folks who are interested in this, as soon as the town of Calis gets a notice, we're going to put it up on the website. And we're also going to likely going to post it on our front porch forum, it's really simple. And let me read to you the, the language that will be on the warning for 20, our 2022 town meeting in the town of Calis. And it simply says, and you could replicate this, shall the voters of the town of Calis require its town government to inform and provide notice to its residents when sources of radiation such as, but not limited to, that generated by cell towers and transmitters, Wi-Fi tower transmitters and 5G antennas are being proposed for licensing, and that's a, that's a legal term, licensing meaning under 248A, I think is a section of law. Title 30, section 248A, licensing and installation within the town limit. So if, when, when that notice comes from the So if, when, when that notice comes from the Public Utility Commission, it may actually not be the P U C, the Public Utility Commission. It actually might be the provider Verizon or A T and T, most likely. They have as part of their application, uh, the application process, they're required to provide notice according to the, the statute. And that's the town and the property owner.
I have a question.
Yes.
So does the, the provider of that device of that jet former, or what did you call it?
It transmitter.
The transmitter. Do they lease space on utility poles?
The, the law require, the law requires the utility, in your case, I guess it's Hardwick Electric.
Right.
Is required by law, I think it's federal law. And it preempts the states from saying anything. It requires Hardwick Electric to provide space on their poles.
And I, I think I have to, we'd have to confirm that. I'd like to confirm.
Yeah, no, no, I, I do this for my job. So, but yeah, no, you should. It's good. It's, it's part of the educational process.
Yeah.
But this is about letting your public know and there'll be supporters of it. And there were people who don't like it and there were, most people probably will be indifferent until they learn more.
Right.
One way or the other.
But this, but this is currently on hold, right?
No, no, not the, not the deployment of infrastructure, the flipping of the switch on.
They're right, yeah.
Yeah, and, and so just so you know, real quick, in the reason it's on hold is the F A A. It's the administration, they administer airports and plane travel and all that air travel, air traffic. There, where this, this technology's been deployed in Europe, it was also a concern. But, you know, for better or worse, Europe's got better laws than we do. And they, they tend to be a little bit less in the pocket of industry and big corporate industry, but not much better. But enough that they required that they knock down the signal from the transmitters within a certain radius of airports or any, any, any location that might impact air traffic control. Verizon and A T and T, they, they, they were planning to implement the full powered signal right next to airports. And the FAA said, no, please don't do that. And they said, no, we're going to do it anyway. I guess their better judgment came into play and they said, okay, we won't. And in the meantime, the FAA is coming up with some, I don't know, interim regulations to try to figure out how to deploy this stuff proximate to airports. But in terms of its rollout, it's there, the infrastructure's there. I don't know if it's in Hardwick yet. They're gonna, they're gonna hit the denser population areas where they can get the best bang for their buck. So the Benningtons, the Burlington's, Winuski's, Rattle Burrows and the like.
Judith, would you regard yourself as being properly warned? If, when the town gets this indication that they were to put, if the town, I guess would be Casey, were to put this on the website? Would, would you feel properly warned if that was the way it were handled? Maybe also put on Front Porch Forum?
With, I'd be glad that that was given as warning, but, but so, so many towns now are, are, are doing this right to know. And the more education we all get, we all need education about what's going on, the, the better. And it's, as I said, I'm just not a good speaker. I get my thoughts all. And so I very much would like to see what's happening with the other towns that, that we, we get this right to know, put on the agenda in March so that there's more and more education. And that's really what I would like to see.
So I, I just would like to pose the question. You know, there, there's lots of development that happens around the nation and the state. And and this is, uh, you know, the, the five G rollout, which appears to be the focus of this discussion, even though the, the sample warning, um, language you read included all forms of radiation that are licensed, I think. So I, I guess I'm just wondering why, why should we place the onus on the town to alert people in this way? Why not just let people there? Cause they're, and my guess is that it's a minority of folks who are interested in following it. Why don't those folks just follow the P U C website?
Well, that the, the, if I might, um, the problem is most not folk, I'm guessing folks like Judith even, slap me if I'm wrong, may not be, have the time or even the know-how to navigate the P U C's website. Or, or just, just to, to, you know, I do this for a living. I, I follow all this and I participate to P U C on occasion. And that website, have you ever, Eric, sounds like you're, you're familiar with it.
Yeah, I've looked up various cases that are pending, yeah.
Yeah, E P U C is, is not as mu, I'm, I'm happy it's there, but it's not easy to navigate. And if you're not really computer savvy and you don't, you have to set up and set up an account. I mean, the idea is if, if your neighbor's going to put in it, I guess you have zoning in your town, right?
Correct.
We do.
If your neighbor's going to put a dormer on their house, there's notice that goes, that goes out to the neighborhood now. Now, there is not.
Not if they don't change the footprint up there though.
Okay, if your neighbor changes footprint, I, I should say, okay. They can call us, actually in Calis it seems you. If, if in your town like Calis, if you expand a footprint of your building, there, there's a notice that's published. And, you know, for the most part, like you said, Eric, most people don't care.
So that then.
They do.
So when, when Hardwick Electric puts new transformers on poles, we don't, we don't get any notice?
No, they don't transmit. But those transformers are for managing your, your electric grid. This is for transmission apparatus that.
Yep.
That invades people's space and has a frankly, an effect on people's health and wellbeing. It's, it's, it's a fact. The FCC actually has made it illegal for states to regulate based on health impacts regardless, regardless. So there was a case that's, that's, that went to court, to the D C Circuit Court. And it was recently decided that the FCC violated the law, the federal law. And they remanded back to the FCC for them to update their regulations based on the new science, the, the, we, the international peer reviewed science on this and the health implications. So it's, it's real. And this is about, really, to me, community right to know is just providing your citizens the fair chance to participate in process. And it would be at P U C, it wouldn't be at your level.
It would be, which is why I come back to, if you're interested in it, you're going to have to participate at the P U C. So why not all of them?
They won't know about it. The regular, I, I don't know, how many people on your select board even know what the P U C is?
But.
Two, two, three.
I definitely think that we all do.
Oh, you all do, okay.
So that would be four of four tonight.
Awesome. You got a good select board. Make sure you.
Emily, Emily would like to say something. Emily?
Hi, I would like to go back to what Wiz was asking. I, I think that we're asking for an initiative to be at the town meeting that asks the citizens of Hardwick if they feel that they deserve to have a, you know, a, a plain notification to them that is easy, easily visible and will come to their attention if this is to happen. So it, it doesn't assume anything. That's why it's going to the town meeting to find out if a majority of citizens in Hardwick would like to see this notice. So, uh, and that's how you will gauge what the interest level is in the town with, to have this notice. So I guess the question is, if it does go as a, on the town meeting as an initiative, then I, I don't, I, I guess it would be up to the Select Board to approve the language of what the question is on the town meeting. Ballot. I would like for you interested, those of you who, who have brought this initiative for us to provide us with the language. We will run it past our lawyer to see if there's anything in there that could be problems. And then it comes back to us to approve.
So this is the 11th hour though, Wiz, because we have, as our last item, we were going to approve the warning.
Right, and so this is going to have to wait till next year.
That sounds good to me.
I, I'm, isn't the language there already though? Is it written out as far as?
I have language with me.
We have seen no language. I asked to see language two weeks ago and there has been no language brought forward. And for the most part, we don't put anything on the ballot without the lawyer's approval.
I, I was shunted off to something that wasn't necessary. And, and that took a lot of time by you and, and perhaps Kaylee approved it. So all I wanted was to come to a Select Board meeting because you do have the capability of putting this on the agenda in March. And it's already, people in our town have been so harmed. We have people that have bought property and the, the, the cell tower up on Hopkinson Hill is going to be heightened and, and they just bought it and they were promised, you know this story. I'm just gonna say, they were promised, no, no, it's going to stay the same. And, and so they went and bought this property and they would never have done it. We have people who are very ill that live near that. So what?
What, what you're asking is just the right to know that this is going to happen. It's not going to change it from happening.
It's going to help educate people.
So if.
It's going to open eyes.
Okay, so basically, um, if this happens and you know that it happens, your option is what? Move?
Not buy the property they were going to buy for, for this person I know who's very ill, he would move, but.
Would they have the, would those people be notified prior to buying that property? If they were from another state, would they, or would that be, you know what I'm saying? Like would, would, so really what, what you're asking from, from us to notify the public for something that, that may happen anyways?
I, I'm not sure why you're all having a problem.
I, I don't have a problem. I'm just trying to like, I, I'm looking at the steps and.
So the, the idea is this is not that complex.
Yeah.
You put it on your warning and as, what is your name? Emily, as Emily so clearly articulated, let your voters decide up or down. All they do is they vote yes or no, they check the box, yes or no.
I believe the language was submitted last year. I actually don't remember exactly what happened with the process. We petitioned to have it on the town meeting ballot last year. I don't think it was.
I don't think you got enough signatures.
We didn't have quite enough signatures. So we're asking you to put it on the ballot without that number of signatures. The language is there though, there, I mean, it's.
I can forward the language to you that it was.
Yeah, I, I believe we have the language already because we worked on it with the members of the Select Board and with town manager and with the, uh, I've not, the name is escaping me of the person who is responsible for setting the, uh, you know, for formatting the town meeting ballot and everything like that. I, I think it's the same initiative. It's just that we didn't have quite enough signatures last year.
Right, and we started really late with it. We got quite a lot, uh, having started.
You know, I, I also seem to remember it was in the midst of that deadline was thrown at us very last minute. And it was in the midst of a severe, severe weather week that we were trying to get these signatures together.
So the, the deadline's the same every year.
Okay, so I'm not a, this is not my full-time job. I'm, this is, you know, I have, in, it, this is a COVID nightmare year for everybody, okay? We're asking you to, to just put this on the ballot, you know? Cause I, I feel like that there is enough concern and it, you putting it on the ballot is not, uh, saying that you agree with it or not, or that it's going to happen or not. But it will gauge whether there's enough community interest in having this plainly put in front of the population. If there's not enough interest, it's not going to pass.
So last year there wasn't enough interest to.
That's not true. The last year there was, you know, the people who were concerned about this did not find out about it early enough to actually do this. The same thing as this year, everyone is living in crisis. This is not our full-time job. I, I have a number of other concerns as well. So it's just, town meeting, when is that happening? Is it like?
So it's usually the first Tuesday in March.
First Tuesday in March.
Like, I believe that's by statute in all towns that haven't changed it.
Um, I don't understand what the time problem is. You need the language by.
By statute? By statute, the, the warning has to be approved.
Has to be approved by tomorrow.
By tomorrow.
Get it in the paper.
Yeah.
Due by the deadline.
For public notice.
Well, it's not by statute because we, we're approving our warning next Monday. But it's coming up.
We have, it's like, the printer is pushing us a bit, I think. Yeah, the stat, the, Monday.
But the language from last year has already been.
Yeah.
Last year, the language is there. So, uh, we can resubmit the same language that we did last year and put it on your desk tomorrow.
Can I read the language from last year?
Um, I don't have it in front of me. I could find it that, you know, a minute or two, you know?
I, I, I think the language that was read tonight was probably preferable to the language from last year because the language that was read tonight from the Calis warning had, um, reference to licensed radiation. And I think that was, was one problem I had last year was there, there are lots of forms of radiation around us all the time.
Lot of, yeah.
It's just something that we live with, you know, probably the biggest source is the sun.
So you want it to be a little bit more specified.
And, cause.
Yeah.
Yeah, lots of things.
Yes, we're talking about re, radiation related to wireless infrastructure, not just random sources of radiation.
Sources, so man-made versus, because the sun is not.
Yeah, I, if that's in the Calis language, it, would it be possible for that to be submitted with the name of the town substituted and given to whoever's in charge of putting this together? Where did the Calis language come from? And did that go past the town's lawyer?
John, can you answer that?
There's, there's no legal issue with letting folks know what's going on in town. If there's, you know, excuse my candidness, but if, if the town voted to provide notice every time the highway department got a new truck or something, they could do that. It's not a, a legal question.
That's true. I think it's quite similar to that, actually.
Yeah, so, so, um, you know.
Which I also wouldn't want to do.
If, if something passes on a warning and then it's determined by your council to be illegal, you don't do it. You know? This is at Hardwick, what's, um?
I'm not so concerned about illegal. I'm concerned about what, what they call comma problems that, that you're trying to say something, words get out of order, there, there's punctuation goes in. And if push comes to shove, you've got a problem because the language was not clear. That's my issue, that it's not whether this is, and frankly, if all you want us to do is put a notice on the website and maybe announce it on Front Porch Forum, it doesn't seem at all unreasonable. It's just that the way it gets stated needs to be very clear so that there are no booby traps in the language. That's why I'm pushing the language.
The language that I, I drafted for our Select Board, and again, I am on the Select Board and we do have counsel and he reviews entirety of our warning before it gets published, by the way. So he will review this, but this is not a, a legal issue really. It, the way, but the way I drafted it, you know, selfishly as a Select Board member, we don't have a town manager, was so that our town had very broad discretion to decide how it wanted to provide that notice.
Can you read the language that, the existing language that you have for Calis?
Yes, I will read it aloud again. Share with me, please, Tony. I'll add Hardwick instead of where Calis was, okay? So if you approve this for a warning, shall the voters of the town of Hardwick require its town government to inform and provide notice to its residents when sources of radiation such as? when sources of radiation such as, but not limited to, that generated by cell towers slash transmitters, comma, Wi-Fi tower transmitters, comma, and 5G antenna, comma, are being proposed for licensing and installation within the town limits? So it's for commercial licensed transmission facilities. And so, and as as I said, I my my, our plan, I that I that I would put forth in our select board subsequent meetings to this being approved, which I expect it will be. It's not that controversial, um, is we post it on our website. And because we're, we always post everything on Front Porch Forum, we would also utilize that tool. That would be it, you know?
Can I ask a question, please? I I just wanna know if this whole situation could be easily resolved without even going to the ballot or making alterations to the warning at all? And simply by a policy shift within the town that any notifications that we receive from utilities or such that we receive would just get scanned and thrown up on the webpage and maybe posted to Front Porch Forum, that it's out there? It would be simple, straightforward, it would be minimal time and definitely less aggravation than making a warning and running it through lawyers and putting it out there. The information is public information anyway.
That's fully within the discretion of your select board right now and has been. Um, but, you know, putting it on the ballot kind of makes it a priority. You know, it doesn't get pushed to the side or forgotten about, you know, that's. And, you know, frankly, we have office staff and we want to, in in Callis, we wanna make sure the staff make it a priority. That's what the initiative's about. And, uh, it's that simple, but you're right, Michael. Um, that is absolutely fully within the town's discretion to do that.
So if we did that, would that satisfy folks if we just said we're gonna put a notice on the website when when we get one of these letters?
I I I guess I like the idea of, of, um, of of putting it, you know, it it feels so democratic uh, to have, uh, at town meeting to 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 have people alerted to the fact that there's something something to have a warning about and.
Yeah, my preference would be as well to have it go at the town meeting because that would alert the town that it is something that they can look for.
Yes.
Because if you just pass it at, I mean, how many people quite honestly watch select board meetings?
Right, yeah.
You know what I mean? But this is our opportunity as a town to find out what's happening in our town. So I feel like it is a much more democratic way to, uh, to gauge the the, uh, the town's, um, level of interest, uh, concerning this, okay? If you approve that, that you would put it on the town website, I would definitely want you to also post it on Front Porch Forum because that's, that's something that does, um, get seen by a lot of people. It it doesn't put the onus on them to be checking the town website on a regular basis in case, God forbid, a utility poll is gonna go up. Because that's, 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 you know, everyone is involved with their own lives, raising their families, they're not gonna be traveling around for information about polls.
It's kind of the crux of the issue, though, isn't it, that, um, people who are interested in this should be paying attention to it? And they already can.
But that's not true. People who are interested, people need to be educated. And when you see it, town meeting, our democratic grassroots wonderful thing. When you see it there, you know, oh, what's this about? And you, and you're open to hearing more. And I just don't get what the problem is.
We do a lot of educating. I don't know, I've never been to a Hardwick town meeting. Um, I used to live in Woodbury for fifteen years and I've been in Callis for twenty. Um, at both of those town meetings, we did a lot of educating.
We're not gonna do much this year.
No, but ballot initiatives are part of that. I I assume you're gonna be performing an Australian ballot.
We are. We're gonna do Australian ballot.
And so we have an informational meeting in advance. I don't know if you're right.
Yeah.
And so we walk through the ballot items.
Yeah.
And and folks will speak to each, uh, each warrant article and provide information.
Anyway.
Um, an educational process.
Yeah.
That's how it works.
All right. Um, I wanna move us along. I feel like we spent an awful lot of time on this tonight. Um, so we are, what does the select board wanna do?
It did, my concern was that they were asking the town staff to send out letters and lots of complicated personalized notification. If all they want is a publication, as Michael said, maybe put the letter up on the website. Make a note, make a pointer to Front Porch Forum to for people that that's there and they should go look if they're interested. That doesn't, that doesn't seem inordinately demanding of the town staff time. I find it curious that nobody has mentioned the newspaper, but that's a whole different problem. If that's what they're asking for and will Bill go over our our ballot before it goes out?
Yeah.
He will, the warning. Will Bill go over the warning before it goes out?
I don't believe he does, no.
No.
But, I mean, the wording, I think, is fairly benign.
Yeah.
I just, my.
So, I would.
Go ahead, Opie.
No, go ahead, Opie.
I I just, I'm wondering, um, I'm new to the the process, but I seem to remember from past town meetings, I don't know if this has to happen if we have an in-person town meeting, but the idea of a non-binding resolution.
Yeah, but that's not what they're asking for.
That's what they're asking for.
Right, right, okay.
If if we put it on the ballot and they vote yes, it has the same effect of our doing what Michael suggested, which is that we just make a policy saying, go ahead and do this. If they put it on the ballot and they, and it gets voted down, then we had, we could still make a policy saying this is what we should do.
Yep.
Um, so I would move that we modify the the proper nouns in the callous. You know, structure the callous warning article to suit the Hardwick warning article structure and put it on the ballot and see what happens.
That was a motion?
That was a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a couple of eight questions on that wording.
All right, discussion on that?
I, I mean, I can't really discuss, but I just have a couple. I I'd like to get that reviewed by the the town attorney.
Okay.
Yeah, my concern on the, on the wording and all that stuff is that here we, so we go ahead and do it and we, um, and it maybe gets passed by the voters, which is great. Um, is there any, we live in a litigious society, is there any grounds for some homeowner who doesn't take the initiative and actually see the notice to then sue the town because they didn't know? Even though we made it available in those places.
It would be a frivolous lawsuit, you know, you can sue for anything. Um, I know this comes up every day at our select board. And when attorney's present, uh, which is usually remotely now, um, he says the same thing. You can be sued every day for anything, has to do whether the suit has merit, um, in terms of sustaining it. Um, so, but, uh, uh, you folks have, and the town of Callis has select word is very broad discretion. This article was written with that in mind. And we we decide how to warn it, and they don't like it, that that suit has not, does not have merit. But we, at the end of the day, we retain that discretion and how.
All right.
So Tony has something she wants to add.
So we'll have to set up another meeting then, if we're gonna, if you're gonna get that added to the ballot and if he wants to get it approved by Bill, for you guys to approve the new warning then.
I don't, yeah, I don't need it approved by Bill, I mean.
You can just send it.
Yeah.
I sent it, right, yeah. So, did you guys catch that?
Can you repeat?
Um, you'll have to have, we'll have to have Warren another public meeting to approve the change of the ballot, the warning.
Unless you get exactly what you want for wording, I think we'll start starting right now, but.
But, did you catch that?
No.
So we need to either get the wording correct now or, um, have another meeting to for the the change in the morning.
In that case, I think we should just make a policy change. So we can, so we can adopt the warning tonight, make a policy change that will happen. Make an announcement to that effect. Judith is right, it won't have the same educational factor, but time is the enemy here.
So we could also, you know, share a screen at the end when we get to our last item where we're approving the warning. So they could share a screen and we could see it typed out on the warning tonight.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second on the table. Um, to add that, I believe Wiz's motion was to, um, add the this so-called right-to-know, um, uh, initiative or whatever to the ballot as written for Callis, but substituting proper nouns for Hardwick.
Yeah, and and our our articles you see, you know, will the town vote to that there, there's some subtlety changes in the language that don't have any effect? But it just, you know, for the parallelism of the warning itself, first three or four words are different.
So, well, uh, okay.
Somebody wanna call O'Reyes?
So, all right, so we have a, um, a motion and a second. Uh, any more discussion?
I just think that we're gonna run into timeframe issues because this has to be finished by five PM on Monday, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and I think there was a little bit of a push to get the printers ahead of that because they were backed up and we need to get it printed so we can get it mailed. Um, but we could look at it tonight at at the end.
Look at it tonight at the end, and if we don't pass it tonight at the end, then it will take it on as a policy later.
Okay, so, uh.
Shall we ask to table my motion?
No, let's vote on it.
Okay, all in, so you, so you're suggesting you vote it. You're suggesting.
Put it on there.
You do want? You are?
Yep.
Okay. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, oh my god, it pains me to vote aye on this, but I guess I'll go along just because I wanna move on.
Let the people.
Pass anyway, huh?
Let the p- voters decide.
All right, so that's everybody. Um, so the motion carries and we'll add it when we get to it at the end. Too bad it's not a meeting where we have discussion, the town meeting. All right, so next is item three, select board to discuss and consider a warning item for, another warning item for retail cannabis.
Mm-hmm.
Who has information on this?
Do I have language for that one?
Or information on it, anything?
We don't, you?
No, I do.
Nope.
So are we not gonna vote on it? What's the, what has the task force come up with, anything?
We've had one meeting to discuss this and we planned on getting um, this out to the public before town meeting. I didn't, I guess I dropped the ball on this one and didn't think that, uh, we needed the language for the warning, but probably should have had it.
You, is it? Do you wanna try to add it and then we'll do the warning at a special meeting like tomorrow afternoon or something, whenever people can do it, or?
It'll be super Monday cuz it needs to be warned, right?
No, uh, you can, well, yeah. If we're really, yes. Special meeting needs a day. Twenty-four hours, I guess. Is it, is this something, uh? Oh, Emily, I think you're typing. Could you put your, um, your thing on mute, please? Thank you. Uh, do, uh, what's the, what? I don't, honestly, I don't know what the language would look like. We would need to have the language to put it on there. Do we, is it important enough to get it on there?
Yes.
Yes.
We need to have.
Can we, do we, can we meet on Monday? Uh, do we have a quorum that can meet on Monday? I know that Kaylee was not available, right?
I can be there.
I cannot meet Monday afternoon. I can meet Monday morning.
Okay, I can meet Monday morning or afternoon.
I can as well.
Um, me too.
Okay, so.
So.
We put both of these items.
Till then, and, uh, Mr. Upton, you're gonna organize us for another get-together to to prove the warning.
Monday at ten o'clock, is that?
Yep, and then.
Ten a.m.
And you're gonna push out to the select board ahead of time, uh, a draft warning that has both these new items.
Yeah.
Great.
And other towns have voted on this already, right? So it shouldn't be that hard to find the language, right?
Yeah, a lot of towns have already, yep. Some did last year. Yeah, I think the language is pretty, it may even be defined in statute.
Standardized.
Yeah. Okay, um, that's good. That actually simplifies things for tonight. So moving on, item four, select board to consider appointing the assessor, Matt Krajewski, to fulfill all lister duties until a charter change is processed and accepted. And the issue here is that, um, the listers have in fact, uh, or two of the three anyway, listers have in fact retired effective the end of twenty twenty-one, I believe. Or thereabouts. And so, um, there are some things that that need to be done. Um, that that probably our best path forward is to, um, appoint Matt, who's our assessor to do them.
And didn't Casey build a little in the budget just because of this overlap?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I'll make the motion that we appoint, um, Matt, the assessor, to fulfill all lister duties until the charter change is, uh, processed and accepted.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And please, there we go. That's all four, um, so motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
All right, hey, thank you. That was easy.
All right, moving on.
On Monday, you feel free.
So, moving on, item five, select board to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with KAS Consulting for a brownfield remediation at the Yellow Barn. This is something that is paid for through a, um, EPA grant that comes through the Vermont, um, ACCD, Agency of Commerce and Community Development. So it's fun, it's completely funded, um, and is something that needs to happen for the Yellow Barn project to move forward. There was a competitive bid process, KAS was the the best bid. Um, so I would love to hear a motion to, um, have the town manager sign that contract.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Sherry said aye.
Aye.
Yeah, okay, so that's everybody. So motion carries. Thank you. Next is item six, select word to review and consider approving the twenty twenty-two town meeting warning. We're gonna put this off until we can meet again, which at least currently tentatively penciling in ten AM Monday, the twenty-fourth. Is that twenty-four?
Yep. Yes.
Okay. So we're not gonna do that. Then, select board reports, new business, old business?
I have a report from the downtown commission.
Great.
We're just about to launch our our template for the banner, the second set of banners that the grant from the community foundation gave us. So this is the set fifteen banners that will be open for Oregon, local organizations like Trails or the Townhouse or the Historical Society or, I don't know, Hazen.
Yeah.
No.
The template looks great.
Or whatever. So there's a, there'll be a template. We're gonna put it in on front porch forum, I think, and it'll be like a fillable thing. I don't know how to do this stuff, but Abra is doing it. And the first fifteen people or organizations that come forward with the all the right information, the the logo in the format that it needs to be in, et cetera, et cetera, will be able to have this thing free paid for by the grant. If people need a little technical assistance, getting their image to, you know, fit in a proper way or make it an EPS or a TIF or whatever the required stuff is, Abra will offer her services. She's she's very reasonable. That part would be some cost to the organization. The grant won't cover that part, but the beautiful banner, they will. So.
So people need to look for the announcement and that'll tell them who to contact.
On front porch forum and then yeah, I'll try to, yeah, and if anybody has questions, they can stop in and ask me.
Right. That's great.
Yeah, exciting. And so the set, there are two sets of banners, right? The first set, the one that says, welcome to Hardwick and is all the same banner is at the printer right now. So two to three weeks, we might see that completed and then maybe you know, a week or so after that, we'll replace the snowflakes with our brand new beautiful, welcome to Hardwick banners.
Before Memorial Day, great.
Well, yeah, but you know, it's that in-between time because those
Oh.
Those out of the box banners are kind of blot in the spring. I mean, the snowflakes are okay, but you know. Special.
Yeah.
Maybe it'll be sort of aligned when the electrician gets the poles so that we can put the winter placemaking lights and wrap the poles with the white lights too. It'll be spectacular downtown.
Just accurate, right? Other reports, new business, old business?
Um, what's going on with the Yellow Barn?
Yellow Barn. So it's hard for me to be succinct about the Yellow Barn, but let's let's say I'll try to be succinct and say that the the goal right now is to get the project out to bid by the end of January, which I think is a bit of a stretch goal because we're still working with funders to approve the the everything, all the, all the administrative stuff. It's all pretty administrative. But we we need to get approval mostly from EDA before we can go out to bid. And we're trying to pushing to get that to happen by the end of the month.
Succinct enough. Congratulations.
Well, I'll save congratulations until we get there, at least for that part.
No, congratulations on your succinctness.
Oh, thank you. I will make a report that the select board was a was sad to hear the passing of David Raphael. Who we had, who had come up and helped us to
Community engagement.
Community engagement process around the Swinging Bridge and he had great ideas around the, like, trying to make it more of a park-type atmosphere on either side of the bridge and really and you know, he's he's a great guy. It's sad to hear that he's gone, but that was, that was the best obituary I have ever read.
It was a very nice obituary, yeah.
Somebody knows how to write.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a shame.
Yeah.
Where was the obituary?
It was in seven days. I got it online and and I shared it just, I got it last night late. It made me not sleep well. It was really sad. But it's nice. I'll share it with you, Wiz.
Thank you.
Send it to the whole board because it was, that was really nice. And he was, he was a great, great guy. And that's and another example of administrative slowness, that's something where he passed away before we get a contract signed.
Right.
Holy cow.
But hopefully, well, at least he was working with
Bob Neeld.
Bob Neeld, who's the engineer on the thing, and so maybe
Yeah.
Different architect or may someone else can work also with Bob Neeld.
Yeah. Continuity, yeah. Okay, any other select word reports, new business, old business? Could we have a?
I just want to remind the hardwood voters who are interested in running for office. They don't have to do a petition this year, we learned yesterday. But anybody who's interested just has to bring in still Monday, the twenty-fourth by five PM consent consent of candidate form and you can print it from the website or stop it to the office, but we still need that form to get your name on the ballot by Monday.
Great. Thank you for that reminder.
And I'll put a list on the website tomorrow and front porch forum of all the all the offices.
Great. That's awesome. Thank you. Could could we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters to include the town manager? Are we including anyone else, Mr. Upson?
No.
Okay.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, business to conduct. We have a proposed separation agreement. Is that the title?
Would you like me to make a motion? I'd like to make the motion to authorize you, Eric, to sign the separation agreement and general release with Darren Barber and the Hardwick Police Department.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
Aye.
So we have Wiz, Sherry, Eric as ayes and Michael as in that abstention. Good.
Is the thing tomorrow at two thirty, is it on Zoom or how are you doing it?
Yes, Zoom.
Because I could maybe do it from there.
They probably have wifi.
They have wifi.
Let's see if Kaylee can do it and if she can't, you could be backup.
Yeah, I could maybe be backup.
Sorry to be dropping this so late. Um, all right, so that's all our business. I just want to close with a big thank you to David Upson for his work as town manager thus far. It's greatly appreciated.
It is. It is.
I agree.
It's a hard job.
I think it was a good hire.
It's why we hired him.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm still here.
There's so many.
Oh, you're still here? All right.
Hey, I'm I'm writing motion to adjourn, so.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?